America in due republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call all supervisors present. Barry Abbott joins us on the phone. Through media. Township managers here, township secretary. Ladies here, Jason. Township fire chiefs here. Not missing anyone in the back. And our township zoning officer, Pat Green's here. Are there any public comments on the agenda items only for the municipal authority? Approval of minutes from the March 4 meeting. Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Abbott.
Yes. The microphone's over here. Microphone's over here.
I just heard him barely, but okay. Mr. Beers?
Hi.
Mr. Malika?
Hi.
Mr. Whitaker?
Hi.
And Mr. Sullivan?
Hi. We have no tabled or unfinished business, no new business, no correspondence. Administrative reports, manager?
Yeah, just a few things this evening. First, I just want to let you know that we are working through Section 108 loan update. We're going to be setting a closing, so we finally are almost at the goal line for that. It should close in April. So that is an $875,000 loan. We appreciate the city executing the resolution we needed to get that going. One big thing, we did want to update everybody. Sewer and water bills will be switching over to coming from the city in May. So the Sandy Township bills will actually come, be generated from the city and be paid at the city building or via envelope to the city. So that is on our website. We did send out notices. I think we have another notice going out here in April, Perry, is that correct? So just to let everybody know that. So exciting news, we did receive a $1.5 million grant through the federal appropriations process from GT Thompson. So we just want to thank GT Thompson for helping us obtain that grant for Quinys Trail Phase 3 sewer project. So we're really excited about that. And we've been meeting with the developer, meeting with our engineering firm to get that project full steam ahead. So we're excited about that grant. Additionally, I want to let you know we did put in federal appropriation grant applications for industrial drive for sewer in that area. So we did put in with Senator Fetterman and Senator Casey.
That's all right. Okay. Board member administrative reports. Second, by?
Second.
David, Tracy.
Okay, Mr. Abbott?
I think they thumbs up.
He gave you a thumbs up.
Oh, did he give me? Oh, that counts, okay. Mr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Malika?
Yeah, yes.
Mr. Whitaker?
John Call.
Mr. Sullivan?
We got you now, Beers.
Okay. Thank you, Barry.
Thanks, Doris. Board member comments. Bill, Barry, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you. I'd like to thank GT for helping us secure that grant.
Yeah, I think it's awesome. It's good. We can get the industrial part done too, so you can stand there.
Sam?
Uh, no comment.
Bill?
No comment.
I'll just echo what Barry and Dick were saying. It's great that Senator Thompson, or GT Thompson could help us out with that grant.
Just one question. When will that, when can that project start? Do you know?
Most likely it'll start summer of 2025. So we're going, we have to go through some, first of all, we have to go through a grant application process, just to tie up some loose ends. We have to get engineering completed. We're working with the developer. We have to have a road installed. So a couple of things we're working through. But yeah, summer 25 is the target.
Engineering is in place?
Engineering, we're working on final design. We had about, I think, 60% design, so we'll finalize that design. We're working, we'll be working on our water quality management part two permit for the pump station.
Open the meeting to the floor. Municipal authority. Close the meeting to the floor. Motion to pay bills.
Motion to pay municipal authority $37,145,222.
Second.
Mr. Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Beers?
Hi.
Mr. Malika?
Hi.
Mr. Whitaker?
Hi.
Mr. Sullivan?
Hi. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Beers?
Hi.
Mr. Malika?
Hi.
Mr. Whitaker?
Hi.
And Mr. Sullivan?
Hi. Move into our Sandy Township Supervisor meeting. Role call will remain the same. Public comments on it. Agenda items only. Not hearing any approval of the minutes of the February 19 meeting.
Motion to approve March 3, March 1.
Yes. Second.
Mr. Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Beers?
Hi.
Mr. Malika? Mr. Whitaker?
Hi.
And Mr. Call.
Hi. I'm assuming that's a missed burn in the agenda. February 19?
Yes. Mine says March 4.
Mine says March 4, yeah. Mine does too.
Everybody else the same March?
February 19?
19.
Doesn't really, whoops.
Okay, the hard copies don't have.
Mine said August 4.
We have, actually, I can read. We have no tabled business, no unfinished business. New business. Number one on our new business will be the Intergovernmental Cooperation Agreement, Resolution Number 6-2024. Sean, would you like to touch on that?
Sure. This is a resolution to allow me to work as manager of both Sandy Township and the City of DuBois and allow Chris Nusudi to work as both Sandy Township engineer and City of DuBois engineer. There is a compensation associated with the resolution in the amount of $15,000 per year. Just to let you know that this was approved at the joint board level and the City of DuBois did approve at their last meeting.
Motion to pass Resolution 6-2024.
Second.
Mr. Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Beers?
Hi.
Mr. Malika?
Hi.
Mr. Whitaker?
Hi.
And Mr. Sullivan?
Hi. Number two, North Point Fire Company. They are requesting Sandy Township Supervisors to insure a QRS vehicle. I would assume that's just going to be in North Point's area.
Yeah, just, yeah, that's all we respond to.
They were smaller. Aren't they?
Well, do you have insurance on it now?
Uh, just, no, just it sits in the garage.
Hey, Bob, could you mute your phone, please? Could you mute your phone, please? Thank you.
No, when, when we got it, we gave proof of insurance, like, for the whatever grace period that they give you, and it just sits now until after this.
My only concern is, is I don't think we should be adding to the fleet at this time because we're doing another study and we're supposed to be looking at reducing, not adding. And also, point number two is, is when another fire company in the township had a crashed truck, per se a claw truck. This board of supervisors made them get their own insurance at that time.
So it's just an insurance issue. Truck's already been purchased.
Yeah, we, yeah, we paid with fundraising money, yeah.
My question is, do we have like a, do we have like a long range plan for buying trucks? Or are there any more trucks being bought by the fire companies that anyone knows of?
Not that I know of. Each individual, individual fire company from other, I don't know.
Okay, so they need to have any kind of any one, so.
But we couldn't add to the fleet, whatever you have under your station.
And the insurance is how much, no one knows how much insurance costs for the truck. Is it like $1,000 a year? Or does it add to the, is it just like, like our policy? Maybe it doesn't add anything because our policy covers multiple vehicles?
Um, my best estimate, same would be an increase of about $1,000 to $2,000 per year.
Now, you're going to give replacement costs like the other, if this goes through?
Yeah, we have replacement costs on all of them, yeah.
So is one way, we would just approve the insurance except for the, like, one incident? Or then, or?
I don't think we've increased many vehicles throughout the years. One of them had been replacements of existing vehicles.
I guess if this goes through, Jason, I'd like you to bring up your first fire subcommittee. I know the last time we were meeting, we indicated that we would not be adding to the fleet. But if you explain this is QRS related and really not fire and I don't think DuBois City, I can't speak for DuBois City, but I would hope that they won't have a problem with that.
And why'd you buy this vehicle?
So it wasn't planned out. We run our squad, it's our brand new engine, and do run in a QRS, just kind of slower and aspect, and there's limited drivers, so not all our QRS people can drive it. And not that it's a, I guess, big thing, but it's a lot of wear and tear on it going out, you know, going out and running and coming back with all the, with the extra 30-plus calls for the QRS. And then on top of that, a lot of the times when we show up, we have a big honking truck and a lot of people don't like, they kind of want minimal type of thing. So we seen it. We looked at it. We said Dale Kilmer, he was a mechanic for United Leaven, he went down, looked at it, checked it over. Said it looked, everything looked pretty good. We have maintenance records here. But, so the price wise and stuff, it kind of fit into where we were. We didn't want, we didn't want to spend a whole bunch of money on something like that. So for the cost of it and the shape that it was in, company decided to move forward with it.
It's something most anyone can drive?
Yeah, it's a F-350 pickup. Yep.
So why'd you go with the 350, bro?
Well, there wasn't really any 250s on the market unless you want, like.
Like an SUV?
Aftermarket, again, same thing. And it kind of, it is one of them. We looked at other things. When we, we seen it, we were told that there was other people in mind. So then we started looking at other things. And for the price of it, like, if we were to buy anything else, we didn't have to turn on and put lights on and outfit and stuff, and it was just added cost versus something was already done out. Already had lights on and sirens and stuff.
So it was a pickup bed or is it a utility boy?
Uh, it's a pickup bed.
Pickup bed.
Yeah. I won't see if you show, yeah.
You're holding on on it, son.
I didn't, I didn't know we had a picture on it. And like I said, I got the maintenance director here, he can give the township mechanic. We can even bring it up to the township mechanic, keep it looking over, that's no big deal. Dale looked at it and he said it was, he was impressed with how, you know, the shape it was in, so.
I just have enough weapons.
Oh, I was going to say, I didn't know we had a picture. And just as far as the, the no more additive fleet, we, we knew that was a thing when we had the old, the old fire subcommittee. But then when everything got pretty much thrown away, we realized that was the only portion that was sticking or vice versa. And so it wasn't like we were just trying to play the games on it. We just, we came across it, we seen it. So like I said, there was other potential buyers and stuff, then they, they fell through. Maybe we had the option, so we, we added on it.
Well, actually, the fire subcommittee really didn't have nothing to do with this.
Right.
Because when we sat down with council, there's three main functions that they're supposed to be looking into. We kept that out because we kept out the fire stations too until we do the study. To see what it was.
I was thinking it was through the fire subcommittee.
Three was, I was SOGs and that the nine members supposed to be working on.
I was thinking it was through the fire subcommittee.
What I, what I was referring to was the initial fire subcommittee when everyone was meeting. I think it was stated that Dr. Perkins' chair.
Right.
We weren't supposed to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, we weren't, nobody was to go out and purchase apparatus, build buildings and so on and take one, anything like that. But, I mean, the QRS thing, I understand and see the need for it.
And that's, that's why we paid, we didn't take a loan out of them because we didn't feel that it didn't need to be, you know, something added on to the next someone else's plate, that was for us that handled it.
So I have a motion?
I make a motion.
That we.
Buy the insurance for the vehicle.
Is there a second to the motion?
Oh, second, but can I put a, add to the motion that our, our upper limits for payment for insurance is $3,000?
As long as it was.
Technically, you're supposed to make another motion with that in, but I would accept that.
Which I think, I don't think it will cost $3,000, but I just.
Been properly moved, the second that Sandy Township Supervisors provide insurance to North Point's new QRS vehicle not to exceed $3,000 annually.
Mr. Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Beers?
No.
Mr. Malika?
Yes.
Mr. Whitaker?
Yes.
And Mr. Sullivan?
Yes. Number three on our agenda, solar ordinance. Do you have a presentation for us?
Yeah, just like a basic gist. Sandy Township is working towards developing solar ordinance. Joel Albert from Geotech Engineering was contacted to give insight into the industry. Joel has worked and developed many solar field projects. He has experience in designing and developing these projects. Ordinance from this township, patent were also reviewed and expected to give example of neighboring municipalities. It's just in between Port Matilda and State College. The planning commission is currently working through draft solar ordinance. Over the past several years, the demand for both residential, industrial, other solar panel developments has greatly increased. I just had an email conversation with somebody today about a utility grade solar system. Sandy Township does not currently have any solar ordinances, but the planning commission is actively developing an ordinance that would meet our needs. Several large scale projects in our area are beginning to develop. It would be best to have some kind of ordinance in place to guide these developments if they do come to fruition, so. Just kind of noticed that we are having interest from this type of industry and currently we don't really have anything in place, but we are developing something. Hopefully a full effect project possible.
So would this cover, how installation, or is this mostly industrial?
There's going to be some influence on local, like, private level on top of the house or something, but most of it's going to be situated towards some of the industrial, like, community level.
And you said you picked Patton Township? Do they have a lot of solar being installed there?
They do. They, I actually contacted State College Borough first and they said they actually don't have any, but the officer that I talked to actually wrote the code for Patton. And he said they're having a lot of interest. They, what they're looking for is mostly farmland, wide open areas that they can easily install these units. So a lot of more developed areas aren't really, the price of the property is too high and then there's really not enough room to put these. So they're looking at these more rural areas, so.
So they, they make these, so they want to make sure that the, when they put these in, that the, there's no reflection and things like that, or?
Right, yeah. Some of the ordinances do call for like a glare, so I mean, they call it. In most cases, what you'll find is that they're, what I'm finding out is going to a lot of these trainings is there's not really a whole lot of glare associated with them. They're designed mainly to absorb light, not to reflect light. So, but it is, I would see more of a potential for glare on like a house, a residential house, because you can have a steep roof and, you know, protruding on the neighborhood properties, that kind of stuff. We're kind of working through all those nuances of it and trying to develop something pretty solid.
Can you check on your P sets? Because I know it's real big down in Montgomery County.
Yeah, and what Pat referenced, they have a statewide general ordinance for a lot of this stuff. So, yeah, we can certainly check. We do have a 90-acre solar farm and they call it the PGMQ right now, so it's in line. They're going through that permitting process through, through that entity. We also have been made aware of a couple of lease agreements that folks have for community solar projects, which are smaller, 25 acres usually about. So that's why we think it's important to get something in place now.
Would there be like a provision for them signing like a franchise agreement with the township? Or is that against the law? For larger projects, so that the township?
I think that's definitely an option. I have seen where some municipalities have developed some sort of agreement with the utility, the solar utility companies and stuff, but as of right now, it's, it's so new, there's a real wide range of what you can do.
But that's something you could write in, just.
Potentially, yeah, for sure.
Before someone comes in and say, well, you're going to pay like $50,000 for the ordinance.
If we write a contract or we can talk about this. I just read that a solar farm had severe damage by hail. And it contaminated the soil underneath the solar panels. So I think, you know, we ought to, you know, think about it, you know, get some more answers. You know, I just, if Pennsylvania, you know, if it's so good, why isn't every house in Florida have solar panels on there? Buildings, businesses, and houses, you know. I think it sunshines more down here than it does in Pennsylvania. That's my thought.
They just signed a $96 million contract for, over in, over in the eastern part of political county. So that's, that's a huge one that gets coming.
And that's all federal grant money.
Yeah.
Might be something like we do for, when we have fires. That might be able to hold back 20% every time or something.
One of the requirements that they're looking at, Barry, kind of address your point, is they would bond, have a bond for the life of the solar panel that, so we can make sure they're decommissioned appropriately. Because we don't want fields of hail damaged solar panels sitting out in the middle of nowhere. So, but that would be part of it, is that they would have that bond requirement.
We can, we can even run into the ordinance, like a maintenance agreement to require them to fix these panels so they're not sitting.
Especially the kind of.
Does anybody have a question about any of those parts?
No. But we do have ordinance.
So are we going to motion to further discuss it? Are we going to motion for it to move forward?
No, we don't really need a motion. It was just a presentation by Pat to tell you what the planning commission's working on. So they want to take another crack at it at their April meeting and then most likely, I'd say, May or June, we'll have something from the board of supervisors.
Perfect. Thanks, Pat, for doing that.
Yeah, same thing.
Okay, moving on to correspondence. Tax claim bureau has sales at Section 19, Lot 114, Section 1, Lot 132, Section 19, Lot 492. And I don't know what the tax claim sale trailer is. Maybe it's a trailer. Well, usually they have the locations up in. Yeah, it's common.
See if you would have written. You would have got the right time.
That was correspondence received. There's been no correspondence sent, so I would like a motion to receive and file correspondence.
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
Mr. Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Malika?
Yes.
Mr. Whitaker?
Yes.
And Mr. Sullivan?
Hi. Administrative reports. We have a tax collector's report, a safety permit fee report, zoning report, public works department report. Just want to make sure Chris isn't here for the police department report. Jason, anything to add to the fire department report?
Just a couple of events coming up in the next month. First of all, this Saturday, there is a kids fair at Central Catholic School from 12:30 to 3. The plan is, weather permitting, we will land lifelike at the school with that. And then box alarms are in county's hands, just waiting for them to get those all implemented. Should be by the end of the month, I would hope.
Yeah.
But we're at their mercy.
Good thing it's best by year.
Answer of reports, nothing, managers report.
Just a couple of items for you. Want to let you know we did receive a cybersecurity grant for the state that runs for approximately four years. That will provide us additional security, cybersecurity for our hardware and software here at the township. Additionally, it will include intrusion detection. So we, we train our employees pretty frequently on appropriate email usage and those kind of things. And this will help detect if, if there are any weaknesses in that system. So we're happy to get that grant. It's 100% paid through the state. I wanted to let you know we are going through a pretty major pension audit right now. Terry's been doing a great job on it. It's a little complex because it's, it's been five years since they've been here. But they've been here for about five days and again, Terry's doing a great job and a lot of information, all this stuff's reviewed. Want to let you know about a big issue we're having right now. You might have seen it in the news, but we do have a major water issue at Country Place Mobile Home Park. The Mobile Home Park has been without water since Saturday at 9:00 PM approximately. We did go out today with township crews to try to find, help identify the leak. It's very difficult because it's about a mile long line through farm field and it's not. No one knows exactly where it is. So we're kind of just looking around, see if we've seen wet spots and using our equipment in spots that look like there's some kind of issue there, earth sinking or something along those lines. We also did secure an agreement from the property owner to allow us to get onto the fields to dig test pits to see if we can locate the water line and do whatever we can. Our emergency, our LEMC, an assistant LEMC have been doing an excellent job. Bob Wilson and Larry Bickle have been putting a lot of work into this over Easter and then again today. I know Mr. Bickle was out there all day long with the water buffalo, making sure residents had their question answered. And I was going to turn it over to them if they wanted to add anything, but I know they've been working really hard on this. We're going to double their pay.
Larry Roberts.
Hey, listen, yeah. I want to thank Sean, first of all, for giving me the opportunity to help people here in this township. I believe it's called the Colony Point Trailer Park. 60 to 70 trailers, approximately 150 plus people. The issue we're having right now is from the pump station down behind the Sebula store, 1.8 miles straight up to the water tank. It's 30,000 gallons. They have a leak. When I left this afternoon late, they were still working their way down trying to locate the leak from the tower. Started Saturday at 9:00 PM. So where we're at right now, the Sebula Methodist Church has opened up a wash restroom for the community there from 9:00 to 7:00 tomorrow. And we just got news from the Camp Mountain Run Boy Scout Facility that they are going to open up the showers there Tuesday through Friday from 3:00 to 9:00 PM. I think that's an excellent thing for them to do. Been working with Clearfield County to try to provide drinking water through the Red Cross and the Salvation Army. The water buffalo was brought in from Jefferson County, thanks to Tracy Zence, the EMA. We also are looking at opening up the Hickory Grange if somebody just needs a place to wash up. Deputy Bob, LEMC Bob Wilson set me up well for success here Sunday. Uh, Deputy Bob, LEMC Bob Wilson set me up well for success here Sunday during his Easter Sunday, uh, while I was having a nice dinner with my family, Bob was out there working hard. I wanna thank Sean, Matt, and, and definitely the Public Works crew. Uh, one oh six point five with Sonya Federhoff has been getting the word out to the public, as is Elaine Haskins, I really appreciate everything she's done with the Courier Express. Uh, that's enough, it may be a long-term project, we'll, we'll keep on top, thanks Sean.
Thank you, Larry. Is there a motion to receive or file administrative reports?
Motion to receive and file.
Second?
Mr. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Malika?
Aye.
Mr. Whitaker?
Aye.
Mr. Solomon?
Aye. Supervisor comments, Bill?
Uh, just a good job for the EMA, uh, good job that Theresa, you've been getting, uh, a lot on your plate here since you got hired, for lots, which is good, I mean, they're coming out very well, and kudos to you guys. That's all I have.
Sam?
Uh, I just wanna, I'm excited about the Intergovernmental Cooperation Agreement being, uh, passed, and, uh, is there any more that needs done with that, or is that ready to begin now?
Um, I think we just may need a confirming resolution, uh, from the city, but I'll talk to, to the city about that here tomorrow.
And that's all? That's slated to begin the twenty-second of this month?
Correct, April twenty-second, yes.
Dick?
Uh, I'm glad to see all the good things are happening in consolidation and moving forward with that, uh, looking forward to having Chris Nasudi on staff out here to help us with some of the engineering, take some of that off your way. Uh, I think we're making some pretty good strides there. And this, uh, rescue situation here, Larry Love has done a great job, and it's fortunate we have those guys, uh, willing to plan the time, the effort it takes to get this done, and, uh, wish them well in the days to come.
Collaboration between the City of DuBois and Sandy Township as we get closer and closer to, uh, our consolidation date. So, uh, thanks Sean for taking on a bigger role and fair responsibility and a say to Chris Nasudi. Uh, I just think the public should take notice that we are moving in the right direction. Thank you.
And I do not have anything additional, and everything was stuck on there, thanks to everyone. So I'll open the meeting to the floor.
But, uh, have, Sean, have you heard anything from Penn State on that, uh, sort of that rare voting, you know, little type thing that, uh, was going on here last year, like, that was really hurt too much already, anything, but lately, I just wondered, can you hear anything?
We have not heard anything, um, we did, uh, send some feelers out, we did talk to our, our local elected officials to try to get, uh, that in front of them, so, but we haven't heard anything this.
Babe?
You, you can talk, uh, I left you a message, I don't know if you got it or not, but Sherwin Road again, I show up to Planet Fitness, first thing I know is, what's up with the trucks at six o'clock in the morning? Is there something to keep them from running before seven? That's what you had said previously, from that strip, and you said actually they were finishing up last year. Um, this morning, I know six trucks between six-thirty and seven, at least, before that, I don't know if they went by, I didn't hear them at that point, but, um, they're running up and down wild again.
Yeah, I, I did talk to, uh, REA School here today, and actually I talked to Easton from REA School, um, he is looking into it to find out what's going on with the trucks. They actually said they're converting trucks to another facility first, they shouldn't be there that early, so he is checking on that, um, he also did inform me that within a month, these trucks will cease to operate.
Okay.
So, um, but, but yeah, he is looking into it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Close the meeting to the floor, which we wanna pay the bills. Check. Can spot, yeah, you have a statement. Here you go. Yes, well, be bashful, but, uh, keep it simple. Frank, hey, the milk is terrible, thought, love, just got one down before seven, seven, Kings Creek, estate fund, one thousand eight, eight for lot, payroll number one twenty-seven, go, date twenty-eight, payroll six, one, two, four, thirteen, sixty, toll, three forty-three, seven ninety-eight, ninety-six. Eight, six, I'm sorry, Mr. Al, this, oh, yeah, three.
Mr. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Malika?
Aye.
And Whitaker?
Yeah.
And Mr. Solomon?
Aye.
Motion to my charge?
Motion.
Second? I don't, to tear that, that's good.
Aye.
Super spare?
Yes.
Maybe it's Malika?
Aye.
Mr. Whitaker?
That's.
Mm, so.
Aye.
Getting a majority at seven thirty-eight. I'm gonna stick in chance, man, like a Tommy, you're perfect, you have a headless.
You're so, oh, we have water, but they're thinking of things, forget, see, it's, it's the, uh, get cursed six, low, no, zero, this, like, it was involved, when people was going on behind this, I don't know. It was, uh, that's, that's not, I think it's really, it's only start, I'm, I'm